Hello and good evening. I just thought... I would have a little wander. And I come across that. I don't know if... I'm speechless at that, to be honest with you. Obviously no care in the world for the cars. Now, this evening... I thought I'd leave a little bit earlier and go for a wander because it's the town council meeting at half past six this evening. And I've never been to a town council before. I've been to many in Norwich City Council. But never a town council, so I'm hoping... I've got the agenda, I printed the agenda out. So I'm hoping just to go in, sit down, have a listen, see what they're... Let's see what they do. There's meant to be six councillors there. Because I can't have any less than six councillors. So... So yeah. I guess the minimum is six councillors. Anyway, who knows? He's got his Jameson. I'm more concerned that he's going to drop his phone. So yeah, the town meeting is happening in Town Hall. So I think this is going to be my third time. The first time was getting the licence to marry. Second time was registering her death. And third time, town council meeting. I'm not sure how boring it's going to be. I've got a bag of minstrels lovingly bought from my wife in case it gets boring. I can have a bit of chocolate to cheer me up. What I'm gonna do, it's on the way anyway. We had all our binmen come yesterday. Did all the recycling. So they did all the green bins and the brown bins. Nice bench. So yeah, see if... Give them the benefit of the doubt that that all got collected yesterday morning. Oh. Looks like the rats are starting to be attracted. I'm not surprised with all that shredded. That makes good little nests. Not really sure what to make of that. Crazy, innit? Some... Is that gutter? Not actual guttering, but stuff that you put in guttering. Okay, so I've not got time. Let's have a quick hour, shall we? Got 10 minutes. Oh yeah, excuse me. I'm just recording, just to be aware. Your rubbish down the side, when does that get collected?
We don't know, we asked the surgery. The bin man who obviously come and do it normally, haven't been collecting it. So we asked the surgery, I think, who'd they say that Viola was gonna come and get it? Yes. And that's the last that we've heard.
Okay, so that's under Norfolk County Council though, isn't it?
Presumably, yeah. Presumably, yes.
That's all I need to know.
Has been reported.
Cool. Thank you.
All right.
There you have it. Let's just double check that there's no medical equipment. Looking good, looking good. If these cars can be audited, so can they. Lovely evening. I've got something squeaking on me, I think it might be my back strap. There you go, stop now. Oh, look, wallflowers. I love wallflowers. Yellow ones too. Nice. Nice, got that growing really well. Sorry, slightly off topic. Yeah, birds. Somewhere up there. Look, I think that's wild garlic as well. Although it might not be, because I can't actually smell it. Wild garlic, I do believe. Smell garlic. Pass in college. Another one passed. I completely forgot to Google them. All right, now down here, let's check what the time is. If I can find my... Find me... Find my watch. Sure about this? There we go, I've got it. Right. God, it's only gone 20 past. I don't want to go in there and cause a room to quieten down. That's not the reason why I'm here. I'm not here to stop people from talking, I'm here because I want more people to talk. I've also got a list of councillor names. I've no idea who's who though. Why is it? Okay, there goes. I just hope it's not boring. Please don't be boring, I'm guessing. I'm guessing this door. Okay, here we go. Let's see what it's all about. Hiya. Yes, thank you. Oh, sorry, did I nick your seat? It was just the first one I came to. Okay. You're the Children's Day guy, aren't you?
Yeah.
I read that, I think it was in, was it just North Worsion magazine I read that?
Yeah, it's been here this afternoon.
Yeah. So is it just me or is it public then?
I mean, stop, I've got banals, so.
Okay.
You never get anything. Never bore us, public.
Really?
Eight years I've served in the county.
Why's that? Well, let's hope things start changing. So I'm guessing there's not normally this table here then? Because I've heard a couple of people go, "No, we're sitting like this today."
That's how we used to sit when I first was in council. Eight years ago, and then last year there's a change to just sit in. If you're on, then probably you don't need to change the background.
That's why I've brought some... That's why I brought this. So I'm...
That's district councillors. So none of them will be... The only two district councillors, Paul
Right, that I don't have.
and Lucy the other side. Yeah, they're the only two district councillors they have.
Lucy, what, Lucy Shire? She's not here though, is she?
No, she's outside on the phone.
Oh, is she? Okay. I need, do they do one of these then for...
Uh, on the website, there'd be a link.
Yeah. I've tried with that website quite a few times actually, and find it quite...
Yeah, they have it just laid out like individual.
Okay.
With all the wards and who. Yeah, no, it's got there as a cover. See there?
Yeah, Barry up. Yeah, I've seen Barry. The lady next to him in the glasses is familiar.
Sue... I think it's Sue Richardson, I think.
And then you've got the mayor.
Yeah, Sue Richardson. Steve Dibbons, obviously Eric Seewood, who was our town councillor.
Okay.
I can't remember who the guy in the middle, one yellow is our new town clerk, Wendy.
Right.
And the deputy mayor. There's somebody from the faces.
Who's the lady in the corner there? Is that school? She got...
Penny at the end.
Yeah.
That's Penny Flowers of Roxton Barnes, she's the deputy mayor at the moment.
Roxton Barnes?
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's obviously her job, not...
Yeah.
Okay. I've printed.
Good evening. It's half past six, so we should start. Well, thank you for pulling along. As we all had our training last week, we'll remember the rules of good debate, of listening and giving everyone a chance to have their word. And don't forget to turn your phones off. Thank you. Apologies for absence, will be...
Um, it's no offence, I just had soul on a drive.
Controversial of interest on anything that we're talking about, you see?
Um, as it's highways, I'm item 18.
8.3, can I just spend the session as well?
11.4, there's an item on the recommendations I have an interest.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. Next item is the minutes of the last meeting, the 26th of March. Hopefully you've had a look at those. Anybody have any comments they wanted to raise, can I see?
Only finally, I'm really sorry that I didn't do it any more ahead of it, but you've missed the next up at the end of my name at some point. Um, not that there's a little council of ten men. But the future record. All right, okay. At some point, I'll go through that. And the only other amendment, I put natural nutrients, nutrient nutrients, I have amended the minutes.
Uh, we can't afford to propose the exception of those minutes? And second, sorry? Everyone in favour of accepting them? Item four, to information that's arising from the last meetings, the action log. Again, does anybody have any comments they want to make or queries to ask?
Um, just that Wendy and I still to arrange a date to go and look for some pretty big bin holidays to have. That's in time in my form, so two weeks and then over Easter.
Any other queries, maybe?
I think it would be helpful to have some of our ambition in terms of the date that we're trying to get these things done by.
Yes, we did have actually date columns on one of the meetings at one time, we should probably introduce that. All right, my ears, move on to item five. Oh, sorry.
I've just put some information on there, just that the events with the MP are in. And not much more, just that the DBS checks, since being progressed, I'll start to work on that, so... Yeah, the rock and horse is still being repaired. Um, I would, I have... Our playground inspection is in June, so it'd be really nice if that was done and ready for that, because playground inspection people have said that that should be okay, but that would be nice to be inspected for when it comes. I don't have any idea when playground inspectors comes, they just don't know, so... Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Item five is my announcements, probably. I've got the announcements, but I'll just report that last month I went to NDC's civic event, so the first person we met, councillors and mayors from other towns, and interesting that they all have the same issues and problems as we do, so that's quite reassuring. Also visited the Big Bash event a couple of weeks ago and met 20 or 30 local groups who do things for the community, and it's quite good to see them all in one place and see how many groups do support us in town. It's good to recognise those volunteers. Since what I've been up to since last time. We are invited to the D-Day event, which is coming up soon, which I will mention later, I think. And item six is to receive updates from individual council members. I don't believe we do. So we move on to item seven. Open forum, the public participation, district councillors first, so Lucian Paul, I guess.
I'll let you go first.
Given that we're in May and it's an election period, it's only the police and crime commissioner, not a lot has happened, so it's probably going to be ready to update since last time. Okay, Lucy.
Um, there are nothing in particular, district wide, across the town, the majority of coursework tends to be at this time of year, verges, weeding, dog poo, which tends to be a lot of my work at the moment, and planning issues. But aside from that, there isn't anything local really going on, and we didn't need medical, so the district council will need this one, next one, because we're in May tomorrow.
Just interruption there, as Lucian mentioned, planning issues, members may wish to look at applications to just go on in, it's one in Fiddled Road and another one in Recreation Road.
I've already commented on that.
I've already commented on that.
Yeah.
Members may wish to comment on. Okay, thank you. For town councillors here.
Um, so I won't bore you all with potholes. Um, I'm sorry that I do so often. We have got quite a substantial amount of issues that have been reported over the last two years, I would say, which weren't quite bad enough. Um, but now they're getting to the point where they're causing, it's the major inconveniences for those who have got ambulability aid, you know, the trolleys, I don't know what the correct term is, crossing the road because wheels are getting stuck in some of the potholes, which is quite difficult. Some of the pavement surfaces are making it quite difficult for some people as well. So I have offered in two areas of the town, out of my highways budget, if it doesn't meet the threshold, to cover those costs. Um, I think we might be at the stage where it does reach the threshold. Um, I wanted to just highlight the road safety fund that I spoke about, probably feels like an eternity ago, about a year and a half ago, I think now, where I won a bid for North Worsion, and that was the Tiaro and Weyr lines going down past Mother Road to school to try and relieve some of the traffic issues there. Um, but also, and I always forget the road, as you come up Park Avenue and the road that turns off to the left. Nelson Road, thank you, I always forget that, I'll try and remember it, there was a wider piece of pavement. Um, and unfortunately during periods of the day, people would park on messes, sometimes you'd have two or three vehicles on the road, which was making it quite difficult for parents working children at school, pedestrians in general, and again, people with ability aids were having to go into the road. So the highways last week finished the work, yeah. Um, and you'll see if you go over there, there's some wooden bollards now,
Huge.
um, which prevent people from parking on that part of the pavement and are making it easier. And it's not very often that people will come to me and say they've got something positive, it's normally there's a complaint that they want me to deal with, but over the course of the last week, I've had a number of contacts from members of the public, I've not highlighted it, just to say how much safer it's making their travelling to school and their not having to walk there, worrying about cars might have taken pavement, so it's taken a while and I didn't ever see, I didn't ever think it would happen, but we're there now. So I'm really happy about that. Um, aside from that, we meet at the county council on Tuesday, so I'll have months to report on the next meeting. That's everything I've got.
Any questions for Lucian Paul on... Thank you very much. Oh, sorry.
Just to add up to Paul, we're having difficulty to my part to back to road with a collection date for bins. As I've talked about that initially. We've all given notes, a letter on card to say it was Thursday, and they've suddenly decided it's Wednesday.
Okay, it hasn't dropped me an email, I can get sure I get to the right place.
And then much to my surprise the other day, as I was walking around along Backton Road towards the Blue Mill pub, um, I saw a guy with a stick and a wheel on the end of it, going along the pavement. So does this actually mean that they are now monitoring pavements to see if they are at the low knock level, and therefore if they're not level, we might be sending a video.
I shall investigate, I think they're possibly... I shall investigate, um, I think they're possibly getting to the point where they know I'm not going to be quiet anymore. Um, they've tried to manage my expectations, so I'm hopeful. I do know there is a number of works programmed over the next twelve months, that's something that I've now got access to, so I'll investigate that and I'll come back to you.
I was very surprised to see this.
A nice surprise.
Yes.
Okay. Um, is there a report from the police?
I'm sorry, I should have said with apologies, I didn't speak to like just then, she said she couldn't be.
Uh, next is the public slot, if either of you want to sign a note.
Suppose that's me, is it? Um, so hello everyone, my name's Adam Colton, I'm a director of a local music festival called Nearly Festival. Uh, I run festivals all around Norfolk, Suffolk and Essex. Um, we are hoping to come and grace Memorial Park on seventeenth and eighteenth of August. I'm sure you guys have probably seen it dotted around. Um, we've sent some bits and pieces over regarding site plan and soft risk assessment that's kind of getting us going. Which has then led us into our main skeleton EMP, which I'm sure you all want to see at some point. Um, and it was just kind of to come down and give anyone a chance to throw in a grenade really, or fire any questions or anything you wanted to ask me about it. With regards to the event and how we're gonna deliver it. So, yeah, if anyone wants to ask me anything about it, feel free to, um, ask away.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Will be allowed Steve, I can provide participation. I just want to check before I do.
I'm happy, if you're happy. So it's a short, uh, short question, is that, or?
Okay, thank you. Um, so when everyone hears music festival, they worry about what that's going to be like.
Yeah.
Um, I've looked at what you do, um, but I think it would be helpful for everybody to understand what it is you're exactly doing.
Excellent, so it's gonna be a family friendly event. Um, I own several different companies across, I've got a nightclub in Norwich, I own a massive, um, kids entertainment business. We've got thirty-nine inflatable, so we'll build a kid zone in, kids area. Has anyone ever been to Nearly before? Brilliant. I was really hoping to get the back of someone now. Been driving down here thinking, there's gotta be one person in here that's been, I normally get one, but not today. So kids zone, most big kids zone, we're gonna run twelve till seven, so two reasons. Uh, we wanna get finished in daylight, so we haven't got any kind of silliness after dark. Um, two headliners, we've got Oasis lined up for the Saturday night headliner and then it'll be kind of local acoustic bands, that kind of thing. We'll probably run with four or five acts on the Saturday and then four or five acts on the Sunday. Uh, it's something that we're looking to come in and, I'm a brand builder, you've probably seen that, so I wanna come in, put it in this year. Get it right, deliver it right, it's very, very small scale event for what we do. Um, and then build it year on year so that we've kind of got something that can, can sit here, because the park's ideal for it really. Um, we'll offer it out to all the local vendors, um, and all the local tradespeople, of which we've talked, the local market. We wanna get all the local suppliers involved and offer that out as much as we possibly can. So that we can kind of get the community behind it, um, and we will do so through the local sources that we can apply by these guys. So anyone that kind of knows of anyone that would be interested in that kind of thing, feel free to, um, push it my way. Um, bar, yes, we have a fully licensed bar that will go in. Again, the hours of twelve till eight P M, I think then we kind of go under the radar of, it's acceptable. Um, it's, we don't wanna run and annoy anyone, I think by getting done by eight o'clock is great. Um, I'm very, very educated with regards to noise management. So I run exclusivity on the rooftop gardens events in Norwich. So everything that runs in there, and it's massively, massively noise sensitive. So we have, I have a team of noise management team that run on the day of my events. So we'd have an email address, if anyone was to complain, we can send them straight over there. Um, and this is kind of how I would propose the noise management is sixty-five DB, which I or Norwich City Council deem acceptable. And that's less than traffic passing, so if you ever do, anyone knows anything, that's not very, not very loud at all. So we can send someone, someone says, oh, an absolute nightmare, I can't hear my telly. We can go out, measure it, record it, so if they then put a complaint into you guys, we could say, well, there's the noise management plan. This is what we deemed acceptable and there's the video of them taking a DB recording at your door every hour, so that we know we were in. If we get there and the decibel levels are over, we know that we've got to do something about it, we radio back and we get it, get the sound adjusted. Um, with regards to the site plan. Um, I know it's not ideal, but you're seeing on here, but I'll just kind of give you guys, if you can't see, a kind of rough idea of how we're intending to lay it out. So this is gonna be the main site, we're gonna leave the footpath open, so again, you don't get any kind of, and the park, we don't wanna obstruct anyone from using the park. Um, and then we'll kind of scrim it out as best we can, because it's difficult to run it in the centre of the public park, sell the tickets. And not have them all just turn up and sit outside with cases of alcohol, which was actually a question that I was gonna ask leading on to that, of where we stand. Is alcohol permitted in the park? Yeah, so there you go. So it happens everywhere I go.
You require, you require a licence and stuff, but we call great, it's like when fun day and stuff, it's, there's a specific area where that all is, isn't there?
Yeah, so our, our site would be.
Yeah, we have a beer festival, they manage to keep within that, so you could be.
I was more kind of, um, going towards, I was walking, yes. Pete and Dave turning up with twenty-four cans of Stella and a bottle of vodka and sitting outside and getting as much as they can. Where do we stand on that? Abbey Gardens, where we, where we run in Barry's and Evans, they manage it very well. Um, so it's, if, if it's allowed, then we can only but police it. So we'd have stewards there and we'd, because it's obviously then outside of our perimeter, so it's something we definitely need to think about. Um, I'll obviously have S I A security there, it's a shame that the police weren't here, because that would have been more for them tonight.
They do know about your event.
They do, yeah, brilliant. So that would be a question for them really, and that would be as much as I really need from them. Um, we encourage green travel, so we want everyone to come together, highways, um, parking around the local area will obviously, we can announce how many spaces we've got. But we want everyone to walk in, community event, and I think it will be here. Um, I've come here for quite a few years, actually, I used to have a friend, my best friend's just moved from here. So I have been backwards and forth over the years and always kind of had a quiet eye on it, thinking if something ever did come up, then it would be a, a good, a good place to come. So, um, yeah, I think it would be very successful. Um, it's not to say that we're gonna turn up year one and get three thousand people in.
Thanks Adam, it's, uh, it's good just to put a little bit on bones for everyone, and I know you're, we went into detail, sorted out.
Yep, excellent.
SAG in as well, weren't you, turning in?
I can go through SAG, once I say, uh, the, the plan will now come together. We have, we had to wait till we could get the green light, so we could then move forward with regards to doing the event management plan. Because if anyone's ever seen one, it's a tonne of work. So I just wanted to come and kind of dot the i's and cross the t's with you guys before we then fully committed. In case for any reason there was a bump in the road while we, someone said, no, actually we can't do it, and we've already put hours and hours into a plan. So we've kind of put a soft plan in, soft risk assessment, um, which Wendy's got. And we'll get more meat on the bone for that one as we kind of move down the road.
Thanks Adam, I can move on now, but.
Alright, do you need me anymore? Brilliant, I'll leave you guys to it then. Well, it's wonderful to meet you all. Cheers.
Good luck.
With the dog bins. Cheers guys.
I do, if I can, so that's okay. My name is Claire Smith Hawkins, as you can see I have a camera, I'm recording. Um, I'm taking an interest in North Walsham. Um, I've recognised one or two of you, but I'm not here to diss anyone, I'm trying to get it level with community. Uh, I've done a few walk rounds, um, and there's two things that I'd just like to bring up to you guys. Um. Birchwood doctors, they're bins. I have looked, I think it was a few days ago, just walked in here tonight, saw it again, I've, there's medication boxes, there's shredded paper. Um, there's pill packets, blister packets that from what I can see has been popped. Um, so I believe that they are doing their bins correctly, uh, you know, in the safety of what could potentially be in these bins. Um, I called in and asked what was going on and they've put complaints into their bin collectors because they're not turning up. So this big huge mountain of bags is unbelievable. You can see it from the road. Um, rats are now starting to bite in, because I can see the evidence in the bags. So that, that, can I push that back to you guys with the bins? Secondly.
Could I just ask a question?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, with the bin, do you know who is possibly collecting it? Have they got a commercial contract through N N D C for, for certain to collect or do another?
It's under the North, uh, North Norfolk District Council, their bin collection. That's all I can tell you at the moment.
If you can drop me an email, paul.hanrick@northmore.
I'm not gonna remember that, but I'm recording it, so I might play it back.
No, I've got the UK, yeah, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll raise it for Steve Hamster.
Thank you, thank you. Secondly, just briefly, um, Milfield's School Recreation Road, I took it at drive up there, uh, a morning or two ago. Um. I, I cannot believe that there hasn't been a child knocked over. Um, the school has made up its own rule that there be a one-way system. I didn't know that, community doesn't know that, it seems to be that if you go to that school, you get mentioned that you go around on a certain time. Um, I had two cars behind me, I had two cars in front of me, I had another car, I had kids coming out behind me. I, it was nuts and completely not safe, so can somebody look into that as well, please, of the safety of?
Um, that doesn't sit in my council catch, but I can pass that over to sort of.
I think he has tried to address it in the past as well.
Um, yes, I don't know if they have a lollipop person.
There was not one there when I was there.
Or if they've got a contract out for something, um, but I will contact them if you're having to do that.
Thank you for raising those three points.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, next item. We're getting more onto the discussion items now, and another item that we learnt in our training, reminded in the training is about the rules of debate and our standing orders. Say we, we will have one, uh, say our piece and then we have a vote, so when I ask you to speak, please remember to say everything that you want to say and, uh, so we don't have to go round and round. So item eight point one is to approve the income since March. People have to, have to look at those anyway, and does anyone have any queries or thoughts? It's always good having money in the hand.
I don't have a query, well, it is a little bit query, it's the donkeys. Oh god, I don't know. Um, so, so there's a piece of.
Official then.
Um, that we, uh, we've got donkeys on now, I was just wondering if we knew how that was going, it's not fine, that's related. Um, but I'm happy for that to be an update at the end of, I was just, it was, out of all the things we see, we don't normally see donkeys on.
No, no.
Um, it's, they're mainly there looking after our lawn, but donkeys grazing on our lawn.
I don't think we've discussed it in some previous meeting.
It just means.
Um. So about my lack of donkey income. I propose that we accept this, now, second. All those in favour of accepting that? Everyone's having a laugh.
Yeah.
Yep, um, eight point two is the expenditure since March. Any, uh, any queries on that? Excellent, pretty short, isn't it?
Two pages, that is, some of April in there, there's one part.
And I propose that we accept those. Paul this time. Am I in favour of that? Excellent. Eight point three is to approve the grant for D-Day celebrations. This is here because that finance committee, we look at grants, in page two of the forms, we're not quite sure what it was. It probably wasn't coming tonight, I believe, isn't it, but, uh, I was, uh, asked for dispensation on that, so you, do you want to say anything about that, Mike?
Yeah, I mean, I, I honestly missed the finance meeting, because I was, I was unaware it was on a Monday, not a Tuesday, so, um. I wasn't unaware, I just forgot, I had other things on my mind at the time. Um, and again, with this event, this is way back on my agenda now. So what we did do in this room, if you recall those that did turn up, we did actually say that we could possibly fund it with a grant to World Grace Legion. And that's why this grant has come in. I did speak to Colin, Colin's not here tonight because he's not well. Um, but I did say to him that it will be done on receipts and it will be up to a limit. Um, I know he's got the, we've, I've arranged the food for him with Swashnosh, so I know he's got a bill for that and he's got little bits and pieces. I know he's been talking to Wendy, so I'm impressed Wendy can also come in.
So he did come in and say that because of obviously Barry's, was that the point, so, so it was, the, the grant is for twenty-seven five pounds, it's two hundred and fifty pounds for the V I P lunches. They're getting a packed lunch from Swashnosh, and then it's thirty-five pounds for student prizes, there'll be twenty-five pounds for winner and ten pounds for runner-up. Um, yeah, so that's all the grant, I don't know whether to say it in, but I did decide that we wouldn't do what we said about the picnics on the ground and whatever. We just made it very simple and just had this event.
I think as we attended the meeting with Barry and the others and we talked through all of this and they already have something in place, they know what it is they want to do. We still want to be part of it, but anything that we would have, I mean, it would have been a rush for time for us to have really got something together for this. So doing this, it, it's a small thing, but it is important and, and I don't see no reason why we would not support this, especially in receipt base Barry, which is a great idea. But in both.
So there's a question at four seven five?
Two hundred and seventy-five.
What is it, so are we saying then we're ups, receipts up to seven five? I'm aware of it. So this is, seven, now, are we in favour of that? Thank you. Um, eight point four, subscription to R S N Rural Market Town Group, but also in the world, I think.
Well, I wasn't aware either, but I think you can actually see like that. If you have anything else to say.
If you know something else, yeah.
Um, so the R S N is about, it's, it brings together all the rural parts, um, of the country together. And it, and you can get training with them, they do seminars, but they also work on policy collectively together. So we know that a rural area suffers quite differently from towns and things like that. So I've done, been to quite a lot of their seminars recently, particularly in my district role with regards to funding the rural areas. Um, I find it really good personally, because it enables me to network with other people who are part of rural areas, not specifically Norfolk, so that we get a wider look out. Um, and had Wendy not already put this on the agenda, I was going to actually mention it to you anyway. Um, because there are lots of town parishes that attend seminars, it's not all county and district. Um, so in order to get a bigger, wider picture, I would support the subscription for this, I think it would help us be about ten pounds.
And what was the cost of it?
Hundred and thirty-seven pounds plus the eighteen, hundred and thirty-seven pounds, we've had it free for the last six months.
Any more comments on that?
Well, that answers why I've not heard of it before.
It's just something that was.
I'm happy to propose we should give this a try and see how it works for us.
Same second. Are you favour? Consensual to. Um item nine, Mel, uh updates on the profession of a neighbourhood plan.
Um up to this point, our last meeting, we all took the agreement that we would designate the whole parish. As the area for the neighbourhood plan, um because that's agreed, Wendy then had some paperwork which she has to formally submit to N N D C. Which I passed along the paperwork by her email that I'd received from district. Um as far as I know, that's now been sent along and we're just waiting to hear back. We were told right from the off, that obviously at this point, I'm sure Paul could probably support on this, it's been a very hectic time from the planning. Department and all of those things, going with the local plan and everything, so there may be a slight delay to it. It's not a quick process anyway, um so we don't actually have anything back from that yet. But as soon as either I hear something or Wendy hears something, I'm sure that we will move forward and then look to do another meeting. Um and bring in the members of the public again to then take the next steps, districts in the conversations I've had with them on it. Have been incredibly supportive of wanting to work with us and has remarked on how refreshing it was to actually be approached. About the creation of a neighbourhood plan rather than having something just placed in front of them and this is our neighbourhood plan. So we are doing things the right way and we're getting lots of support for the next steps that we don't need.
Yeah, it's hoped that the local plan. Will be approved sometime in July, the last, thanks, I was given, doesn't mean it will happen. It's all about the planning inspector after all, running over their speed. That will then help with that on the neighbourhood plan, so we will know exactly what all of the plan looks like. Uh it's, it's, it's still a chance now that they're trying to reduce the amount of housing proposed in the West, or they may even try and increase it. Current argument is more over a couple of sites in Chrome, that's uh may need to be jilled around, so I don't think from what's been said so far. And feedback that lots has had, that North Port receives changes, but once we have that approved, then we have a basis to work around. And to look in great detail at what we want from the town and from within the North Port and West development.
Now, I shouldn't, but just off the back of what you've said before about the local plan, I would say that was one of the things we were told the district during the conversation. Because the local plan should be in place roughly by the time we're doing this, we don't have to build a complete neighbourhood plan. We take the parts of the local plan which will exist and we just find the bolt-on parts that the community want to have. So it will make that a little bit easier for us as we move forward.
Thank you. I'll wake you up, I have a next one, unless we have a reply by then.
Fingers crossed.
Imagine ten more correspondents. And Fox, just reading this.
But just to focus slightly on that project, it's just very slightly out. Right, so I've got, oh. Yep, that's great, thank you, sorry for interrupting everyone, thank you, Diva.
Uh eleven point one, um receive the minutes of recommendations from the D N A committee, um do you have anything you wanted to add on those?
Um not particularly at the moment, um it still continues to be a heavy agenda on D N A. Um but it is my most favourite committee that I've served on um so far. Um mostly because we get to see the actual physical evidence and the decisions that we make out in the public. Um I think we might need to look at in the future with the expansion of the town. Um how we're going to staff that, but that's not a now problem, um that's a future problem, I just want to put that on everybody's radar.
Any questions, Sue, have we got any updates on uh the arch?
Um I will pass that over to Wendy, Wendy will have a better operation in the play than I would.
They haven't had a vehicle to put the arch in, they need a vehicle to put the arch in and the condition barrel is gone. So they're waiting to get a part, which I'd, yeah, we wait for a part. But as soon as that's back and working, then they will be doing that.
Okay, thank you. Um everyone to market meeting, I can't recall, there's been a meeting since last time, wasn't there?
And there was a short one because we had to do my father boots out and that was it really, just to um go through the new parking arrangement and stuff like that, so that's all it was really.
Yeah.
Uh nothing changing.
Any questions on? Minutes minutes. Uh eleven point three, uh for the M and I committee.
Nothing to add to that.
Again, any queries at all? Um eleven point four is the finance committee, which was last week, there were a few things there that needed to come here to be approved. I appreciate we've come out a bit late for some people to read, but what I propose is going through the items, if there's anything that. The council thinks we need more time on, then we can defer those, but some of them, most of them are pretty straightforward, I think. So the first one, probably an important one, timely, is to proposing to move five thousand from the. Funds reserve earmark for a new vehicle to towards the costs of moving the office to the C E S in the next few weeks. Also, our costs for that, we didn't have a specific item for it, so that's an item we could use.
Um just from a D N A perspective, can I speak to that? Um the new vehicle isn't a new vehicle that is of urgent need now, it was a future. Vehicle need, so it was a, it was a way of saving the money for the future at the point you need one, um and at this point, we don't need a vehicle, but we do need to move premises. So from a D N A perspective, just a paper behind the rest, there's no need to move a vehicle. So is that why the five K is so high, it seems an awful lot of money to go from here to there.
Oh god, but there are some other costs involved as well.
It's a new building, it's very new and fresh and the furniture we've got in there is quite old and dull. And I just think that Scribe, the other people have got all new furniture and I just think that it'd be nice if we could move. Oh no, it's.
It's my T costs.
And I think because I've got to move all the computers across to the C C T V.
I think it sounds great and I think having a little bit more to the budget, just in case, might not be a bad thing, I'm sure it won't cost all, but I hope it doesn't cost all that. Would, would it, I don't know, if we could then just amend it slightly so it's a little bit more reflective of what it is, because had that have been what that said from the off, it's about us moving. Great, that's, that, that's all we've got to do, isn't it, so, so if we can adjust that, then that would be fine, because I wouldn't be on board with a new vehicle. We've had that discussion a few times and I'm sure most people know how I feel about it by this point, um but if it's about the move, we know we need to do it. There, there's absolutely no question about that, I'd just rather we were really clear about what it is we're doing, otherwise it's gonna look a bit strange in the minutes that we agreed something that. Wasn't actually really what we agreed, isn't it?
Well, can we, can we agree that we have a fund of up to five thousand pounds to spend on removal and relocation costs?
I, I would absolutely support that, although I'll be the proposer, I don't mind. It's an amendment, it's an amendment. I'll do, well, we'll have to vote on your amendment and then vote again. Okay, so we're happy to accept your amendment.
Amendment, yes, propose the amendment then.
I'll propose the amendment.
Second.
Orange paper of the amendment.
And then we'll have to vote to accept your amendment.
I would like to pose my amendment.
And I'll support that.
The other, the next item that we agreed to bring here to recommend was adopting the Hillis and Lodge as our internal auditor for the coming year. They provide a much more thorough audit with a, an actionable report on the end, which we don't currently have, so.
Do you want me to explain that, Rob?
Please do.
So they, they could come once a year or they could come twice a year and so it is a lot, it is bill money. But I think we'd be getting a better service, so it's six hundred and eighty pounds for them to come twice a year and there are some of the reports that they haven't, that's not been happening, so. I'm not, I'm not happy with the internal auditor and I just, I've used these before and they are proper council internal auditors and I just feel that it would be better to have somebody. Who knows set things.
I think our current one is retiring shortly.
Our current one is retiring, yeah.
I propose, that sounds like something we need and if Wendy highlighted it.
It's more than your solution.
Yeah. Can I just say something, Jim, can I say I think this has probably been one of the most important recommendations after that meeting? Um I'm not at all sure at the moment that the information that's coming to council in terms of the. Overall position of the council's finances is in a form and a format and the kind of information that. You all need to see so you can fully grasp and easily understand the council's financial position. Um and going back to our training session, it's not just a question of improving the budget. As a council, you also need to know outcomes. Both annually at the end of the year and also probably on a quarterly basis, um how you're projecting against budget and I think in. Having an internal audit will produce a host of recommendations. Which will help us to be much clearer about where we actually stand. So um you know, I fully support it, I, and it's also going to be a matter where I think. Time has to be given to the staff to sort some of this out. Um there's quite a bit to do, I am actually going through some of it for my interests, but um it's gonna take a little while. We just need to give them that time scope to do that, but think out of that and the internal audit's recommendations. We're all gonna be in a much better position to understand the council's finances.
Can you uh propose that? All in favour of that? Thank you. The next item which might as well go forward, so maybe revision of regulations, but it suggested that the spending limits for. Clark and O'Foe should be raised to two and a half thousand from one thousand, so this is, this is for mainly for health and safety, latency kind of. Actions, so a thousand pounds doesn't buy very much these days, so that was the suggestion.
Can I propose that we roll that over to the policy, the financial records, I think that would be.
Want to bear in mind.
You can get a second without.
Um in favour of that? Thank you. Um another big item was the suggestion that we should move some of that money from our. Account at the bank, which attracts a one point two percent interest or whatever to put it into some. Um approved savings accounts, which get four or five percent, it also has the advantage that if you're multiple accounts. We get eighty five thousand pound guaranteed in each account, at the moment we've got everything at one, so if the bank busts, we get eighty five. If we move some into two other savings accounts, eighty five thousand each, that means we've got most of our reserves protected. Um and these are, I forget the names of the camps now, but they deal with local authority and government.
First account is a C C L, C C L A, which is a council and church account, and the second account is a redwood, which a lot of councils are using now.
I think it's, we also need to act that we're gonna get another right one pounds from town to income.
Yes, yes, it's a decent income and all security, so I think it's a, I'm ready, so I should propose that. Um are you in favour of that? Sherry onto that to uh do whatever we need to. Um. The other banking one was the suggestion of moving from Barclays to Utility Trust Bank, I forget the precise benefits of that, but it's uh, it's more focused on our.
At the moment, the payments are all done by one person, so. The, the unity does two, sec, two authorities, so someone would set the payments and someone would authorize them and at the moment, I mean, Sherry's doing the payments, which. I think our internal auditor would have a lot more effect on, and the wages has only been done by one person, so the unity trust is a lot better account, a lot of councils have moved them because of their problems with. About Barclays and the mandates problems and things and they are looking after a majority of the councils, bank accounts now. And then we, we can set payment up, so you'll authorize all the payments, we draw payments and then Sherry will set them up and then I go in and. Second authorized, which protects Sherry, protects the council, protects me, protects everybody. So can I just speak to that? Um so I don't know if Eric will remember, when we reformed Woodton and Middleton Parish Council after it fell apart, you know, twenty, I want to say twenty nineteen, it seems like fifteen years ago. Yes, it was twenty nineteen. When we reformed, the first decision that our new clerk took was to move out of T U T. Because of that second layer of protection and that meant when they authorize, when they put a payment on, another council have to authorize it and you do it all remotely. So you can avoid payments scheduled, so it does give that extra layer of trust, so I used it as a user. Um and it's very easy to use, it's not very complicated and it enables you to see where it is as well. Because you can have councils who, councillors who can look into, but because you've got two members of staff, you've got an all-aidroom bank and a clerk, they would do the authorizing of both accounts once the payment's approved, but you can. Have played two councillors who can just see the bank accounts, which is even better, haven't you? Transparency, yes, so much better. So I'm happy to propose.
Are you in favour of that then? Thank you. Another big final item from finance, we, we built various grants, but then we also wanted to make a donation to North Port and Bloom with three thousand. Um which is similar to what we did last year, but obviously that exceeds the finance authority, so that's why it's come here to hopefully be recognised. Everyone's happy with that?
Um it would be more prudent because obviously North Port and Bloom are doing work for the town. For that to just be a donation as a budget item going forward, rather than it not being part of the budget. Because if North Port and Bloom weren't doing it, we would have to put the same level back into our run anyway. And it wa, sorry, it wasn't in the budget because the budget was done before I got here, but going forward, I'll make sure that goes into the budget.
It was something we used to do years ago, it was two and a half thousand and for some unknown reason, a couple of years back, it was stopped. It's a life, I don't know why it was stopped, but it always used to do it anyway.
Well, I will make sure that goes into the budget.
Uh yes, through the chair, um just wondering why there's a request gone in for three thousand, um it's all like people saying, well, that's because it's always been, well, that's the way we normally do it. But didn't we give them a grant of a thousand pounds um eight weeks ago? Certainly not, so. There's a thousand pounds gone to them since the start of this year, um I just wonder if we're now asking for another three thousand pounds? And it can look into that.
So shall we defer, can we defer that to? I'll have a look for you.
Yeah, I'm sure that they requested the grant for a thousand pounds in the way through.
No, then, then we all agreed it was a donation, that, that way, yeah, yeah, I don't know when, but instead of a grant, it's gonna be a donation, I don't know where far in.
No, no, Penny says it was passed as a donation, I just wanted clarity on that.
Because our grant is only seven fifty, so it can't come in as a grant and it has to be done.
But defer that to the next meeting. Yeah, yeah, of course. It's the same with.
Hang on, one at a time.
Okay, um, so that's all on the finance meeting. Um, item twelve is, uh, to decide whether to disband the markets committee. Um, which Stephen has proposed, so I guess you might want to speak first, Stephen.
Yeah, just a quick one on this, um, uh, for those of you that do recall, before the markets committee was formed, it was called the Markets Working Group. And the reason the committee took on the duties that we have been doing for the last two and a half years is because the, uh, staff, employed by the council felt they were not in a position to organise and run and command the events, hence the formation of the committee and the delegated powers given to them in the T O R. Um, since, uh, the staff are now back up to full strength. And, um, if I remember correctly, at the February meeting, it was proposed that a new council events working group would be formed. I cannot see the reason why you should have an events working group, a markets committee who now no longer organise the events because the town council, uh, and the staff, town, town council, clerk and staff are running those now. Um, so I would propose that the markets committee, as it currently stands per se, is dissolved and it refers back to being a markets working group to work alongside any new events, um, working group.
I think Stephen's right, the councillors stepped up and it's great, it's great. Every single one of us done something, I've, I've stood there with you, Julia and you, Stephen. And we've all done our bit during a difficult time, we don't need to revisit that. Um, I think it would be really good to think about the ideas that we've had for the events committee, um, that's a good thing, that's a positive thing. And we can still all volunteer and do our bits, of course, to help the staff. It's, it's nice that we'll now be freer to actually take on and chase some of those other ideas and things going forward. Um, so I'm, while it feels a shame that we're losing a committee, and maybe it's a positive evolution of where we are as a council, it's heading somewhere much more positive, I, I hope. Um, and given the working group, uh, meeting that we did, that we did for events, which would be for the, um, D-Day celebrations, that's actually a really positive, um, group, it was really nice to come together like that. Um, so I'm, I'm not against your proposal, Stephen.
Thank you. I think I'll second that, but I think for the next meeting, we should just try and define what the events working group is, because it's just an able moment, so we need to come up with some terms of reference for that, but that's, uh, that's my question. Thank you.
Um, in some ways, I would be really sad to see the markets committee disbanded only because of the massive push that was made to create all the events in the town. So everyone who was dedicated, um, Julia and Stephen and Penny, no matter what time, they were always there with smiles and working really hard for those events. It would be sad that the momentum would be lost in a little bit of chaos of, of an events working group, because those are designed to pop up during an individual event. So I'd be really sad for the vision and strategy that should come from the committee to be lost. And I wouldn't want us to lose sight of the direction that has gone, so, um, obviously democratically, whichever way we go with that, I wouldn't want the strategic vision to be lost for what our market should be. And that would then have to form part of the tours of one of the other committees, I'd be really sad if we lost the momentum for that. So I don't know which committee that would sit on, um, because we've seen the market bring lots of new stalls in, it's attracted lots of people, um, and I know in particular Wendy's been trying to poach stalls from other places for, for some of our markets. Um, so I'd be really sad if that got lost, but I don't know where that would sit. So when we look at the tours for committees, if the councils minded to, um, support the decision to disband, can we just remember that when we come to set the tours for the committees, that that isn't the one?
I think comes down to the question, do we, do we need a market committee as opposed to a working party? And although markets are our key events, to have a markets and events working group that can look forward and expand other events as well, seems to make sense. I don't, I'm not sure it needs to be a formal committee, but we need appropriate terms of reference. Um, um, my feeling is that this is something we need to defer, so we've had a look at terms of reference for a replacement committee, or working party rather, before we immediately disband something.
Yes, ideally before we have our, maybe even our main committees. Any thoughts?
In that case, I'd be happy to propose Paul's amendment to the original agenda item. Anyone would like to say that?
I'll second my amendment. We just have to define that.
But I like to define it. We defer it. Yes, until we, until we've got the T O Rs and things done and, and move from there, I think that would be sensible, that'd be my proposal. And everybody in favour of?
I think so, yeah.
We've got to do it all again?
We need to do the following.
Yeah, it is set.
Yeah, for and against, sorry, for and against, because we've done an amendment of a proposal by councillor. So for's, hands up. Hang on, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Against. Against. So it's carrying.
Right, thank you. Um, item thirteen is a decision on town fireworks. It's a bit more complicated today because, um, the application we did have, the Google One Park is now going to be held in a different location in town, so we don't need to consider that one.
The only other one we did have was from Adam.
Have you ever received it?
Yeah, I've got it, but he would want the park, he'd say back, closing the parks, I'm not too sure what happened. That, that'd be the same time, same thing.
If, if it's going to be held elsewhere, we don't need to replicate on the same day, that, that, that would be silly. Um, I, I think the other guy who spoke to us, sounds like he runs really good events, I'm really interested in us chasing with him. But the People's Park is the People's Park and that's why Colin only ever cuts off a small section of it, that's okay, you can't stop people from entering it. So as much as I'd love him to do a fireworks display and I'm sure it'd be really, really good and worth seeing, I don't know whether we'll be able to come to an agreement with them on that, or at least one that we could actually have.
Well, I think when he knows that there's a free event elsewhere in town, then probably not going to divide the commission.
We defer in this because we can't really make a decision?
Well, yeah, I, I think I would suggest that, uh, we defer it and ask Wendy to speak to Adam to see whether he still wants to do it. And if he does, we can come back and explain.
I'm a bit confused here because, you know, talking about, um, Adam.
It's not the guy who said it's more.
All I know about Adam is he was doing the music festival.
Yes, he, he was involved with the people who did the.
And also I believe we've had email correspondence with Mr Scammell.
Yes, well, he's now moving it to elsewhere.
Oh, Mr Scammell's actually put it on Facebook today that he's holding it.
I'm assuming the football club or somewhere, but. Yeah, the Addams, who tried in with the guy who did the one at the rugby club last year, and they were keen to ring it into town to get a bit of.
I understand that, but I don't know who Adam was.
Something for the events committee to look at, all the events working out.
Before that. Something similar for lighting the beacon, won't do they? So this is part of a national.
Can I just ask a question on that? And it's only because of the way I'm reading it, it says eight AM in the park. And then it says please arrive in plenty of time, and it's got nine ten and then nine fifteen.
Eight AM in the marketplace in the morning, is when they all do their.
The follow through, sorry, just seems a bit confusing.
Do you think it's confusing?
Yes.
Well, we can be tweaked.
I'm just saying.
It's also not good from this angle, is it, Julie? Oh, thank you, Paul.
I've noticed on the, the lighting of it, so I presume it's a national timescale for it, I assume.
And there is a, there is a church service there as well.
Yeah.
Um, we did light the beacon for the jubilee. Um, and it was actually a really poignant event for the community to come together and it was really, really well done. So I'm in support, um, of what's lightened it.
So is there any decisions about whether yours is a support?
Well, it's an extra event, isn't it, that you hadn't planned and I've just put it in. I don't know, I know what to do.
We, we, we should do it, we absolutely should do it, no doubt about that. But may, maybe just having a read of this, Julie, it is possibly a little tad confusing, but it's separated like that. A, a quick tweak to that, yeah, we should absolutely be doing this, everyone else is going to do it. And we should be doing it, it's important, isn't it? So if we want to make that the proposal or whatever it is that we're running with that, then yeah.
Just, I'll just ask a question, sorry, Penny, sorry. He can't see the book, so I've just put on some. Um, the bagpipes, does anybody know who that was? Who'd had a head of coronation because.
As I said to you when in the email you sent me, that should, there was a payment made.
A payment made.
So that should be in your account somewhere.
So that's fine, I can say, oh, I'm good.
Excuse me, Chair, um, on the same subject, can we get this out there? Because every other town in the district, Elsham, Stun, Munster, Blackton, we've all got theirs, right? It's all, all that.
I was lucky with the, the just been doing, they've got payments to get them out there, so.
And if he sent one of those to me by email, then I'll put it on next to my name, please.
Um, I would propose that we do indeed have a beacon ceremony on the.
The second one, second.
That's a good place to. All in favour then? Good. Item fifteen, um, we've got this, Wendy, that's HR support.
Um, so I did put some, two proposals, three for Corona and Peninsula. Two more have come in, um, they came in late, so I have just put them on here. Um, it came to light, um, that employment law is changing every month, there's something coming in new. Health and safety is all going to change as well. I think, yeah, health and safety is all going to change as well and it's all going to be. Um, wellbeing and things like that under health and safety. And I know we do have health and safety people, but things change and they're changing constantly. And I just feel that it would be beneficial if we had somebody, a company that was looking after our con, helping me with contracts, helping me with job, pardon us, with job contracts, job descriptions, helping me with a staff handbook, because we've been tasked to do a staff handbook, well, that's a big, big, big job, we have never had one. And just getting us more compliant and more professional. And they also offer counselling services and I think that would be beneficial for certain members of the staff, especially in bereavement, counselling, things like that. That's not only the staff, it's their immediate families who live in their house with them. And I did ask about it and all four said that councillors can actually access this, it's a six coun, six counselling sessions. Uh, yeah, on a certain item, and then if they have another one, it's another certain item. So anyway, they all offer it, um, they all use Bright H R, which is a tablet form, so absence can be logged, holidays can be logged, everything is easy, old people have their own documents, all their training is on it. I wouldn't want to do the H R bit yet because I only just paid for training and with high speed, because this came in before I looked into that. Um, but they all use Bright H R as this app and I have had a query from Bright H R. So my recommendation would be to go with Bright H R, but it's.
Um, personal experience, I've used both Peninsula and Corona, Corona were far superior, far superior. Um, my only query is the absolute necessity with not a huge staffing, uh, when you can quite literally ring A pass and they will give you chat traverse of what you need. Um, obviously that's just a personal point of view.
Thank you.
Um, so if, I'm, I'm going to assume that everybody looked at the budget as much as I did and remembered that we actually put, um, I think it was two thousand pounds in the budget, um, for legal cost for H R support. Um, and that's any kind of queries in terms of changes. Um, I don't know what Bright would give us in terms of if you needed any mediation support or anything like that. And do Bright give us the same level of access to counselling?
They do, but they don't support you if you've had to go to tribunal or things like that, right? Or access to our, so, but your first duty do.
As long with Corona and Peninsula, as long as you follow what the, the procedure that they set out for you for each individual issue, you are insured. So that gives you that extra cover and protection if you're going to go that route.
Well, I'm going to say that I've had the experience, in particular that you've had, Tracy, obviously these companies, so it's good to hear what you've got to say. However, I will say as Chair of Personnel, and a long history of some difficult situations that we've experienced as a council as a whole, I would please, please ask you to think about that and the amount of hours in the background that you may not all be aware of, but I hope that you are, that me and Lucy have given to managing certain things, which while we're always happy to support and always have to do our bit, that, that's councillors, that's what we do, we all do it, every single one of us. Um, having a full package like this that removes as much risk as possible in the future, because it could become really expensive really fast if there's an issue. And I'd rather that we didn't fall foul of anything, so I don't know which one is better out of Peninsula or Corona or Corona. I'm assuming Bright H R just developed an app and they're making money out of it and having a great time, well done then. Um, but I would strongly recommend that we do this and I know what you're saying about the health and safety part. Um, Wendy, I fully respect that, however, as you've said, it's changing fast, there's always something happening. And if this gave you an extra layer of support, okay, we've paid for your training, but this will only help to bolster you.
One of these com, sorry, one of these companies, you, um, both of them do councils, but one of them do local council. What they already do, Apple Bower and Stixworth, I highly recommend it. I don't know if I can tell you about which one.
Backing up what, uh, Miles just said about the time and effort that goes into, um, doing things from his perspective of H R. And my perspective of helping out because of the understaffing situation in the health and safety department. Um, welfare and social media under the Health and Safety at Work Act, like I said before, as amended, is changing faster than Lewis Hamilton around a racetrack. It is, it is taking off at such a, a speed, they're actually having changes nearly every other week. So they're, they're bringing something new in last Monday and by this Friday, they'll have had an amendment to it. Um, so going back to the fact that despite you've got a full staff, staffing level within the council, to put the burden, and I'll give you an example of the health and safety risk assessments and the local forms, that's forty two man hours just to create the forms that were handed over to Wendy when she came on board. And that's the sort of thing she hasn't got time to delve into on a daily basis. So having this as your umbrella, I think is a fantastic idea.
I think, uh, they're absolutely correct on that. It is so complex now that we cannot expect the clerk to be on top of everything. Even with the helpline and A C A, we contacted, it can be a huge amount of work. And it is an area that is best left to the professionals. I've looked at the two we've got, I mean, yeah, one, one is cheaper, but the other ones seem to offer a more comprehensive service. As you say.
The other two are more basic compared to the top two, so.
Quality service is worth paying for.
Um, are we going for just twelve months or thirty six or sixty months?
I'll, I'll make a proposal that we go for the sixty months with Corona, with the full thing, the HR and the HS, sixty months. It's well within our budget. I'm, I'm happy to propose that.
Thank you.
Item sixteen, items for next agenda, we mentioned about, talking about the, uh, the events committee coming up for some, uh. Anything else that, we're putting a next agenda round if you could add items during the month anyway? This is kind of big stuff.
Oi, um, I'm not sure whether or not highways have fully handed over all the verges. Um, and if they haven't, will we need to make a public decision about whether or not we accept? Hornbeams verges, I'm not assuming that the council council are taking a long time. I just know that we have a dispute, so I think that will be in.
I think we have had it, but it became too late for this. Perhaps we could discuss that at DNA.
Is it full council or is it DNA?
There will be a staffing implication and I'm gonna assume we'll be paid for it. Um, whilst I'm comfortable with that coming to DNA, I think it would be better at full council.
Okay. Um. First coming meetings, we've got DNA on the seventh of May and the annual meeting on the twenty-first of May. Um, so that ends the.
Um, so why have we gone from the twenty-first of May not being the last Tuesday of the month?
I did, that was the date that was set a year ago, so there must have been some particular reason.
Eleven does nothing to say that we can't have that as a long term, council meeting, long term.
Exactly, you can change it now.
Um, I propose me to go back to the last Tuesday of the month for the meeting in May.
Isn't there already something going on?
What used to happen, she used to have two meetings, you had the annual meeting at seven o'clock and then the full council meeting afterwards at seven thirty. The good council, the town meeting, it's just the big places in the middle. Great financial works and standard office.
So you have the, um, sorry, you have the annual meeting of the town councils and then you have a normal full council meeting afterwards?
Are you saying you want to train them or is there any reason to train them?
Well, you paid on the month of May and you paid the week after. So will that be changed?
I'm happy to second Stephen's proposal.
Reminder, during the election, yeah, there's got to be important days of the election, so that's probably why, so that was the twenty-first.
Correct.
Just moved on from the nineteen, two thousand and nineteen, last elections.
It's fourteen days from the second.
Well, it's, it's over now.
They're not allowed for holidays on the weekend. It's because it doesn't count for the holidays and weekends, although it doesn't count weekends.
It doesn't make a difference this year, does it?
No, there's not an election, so no, it wouldn't affect it this year, so. But, 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 did, did you say, Bob, though, you would have to give your apologies now? Is there anyone else who would have to miss that meeting if we moved it now?
So you kind of appoint somebody whose absence to be mayor?
I, yeah, thank you on one way, I just thought we'd have a quick, just touch base now in case we accidentally changed the meeting. And realise, actually, that's not convenient for anybody.
Um, I'd like to retract my second, only because it would be improper for us to remove the present that we've set. When we book the dates going forward, um, and it seems improper if we've got people who wouldn't be able to make the previous date. When people have made plans to make this date, so sorry, Stephen, but I'm moving in my second tier.
Okay, change your calendar as you wish. And accept my apologies because I'm a bit.
That's typical, isn't it? Um, uh, it's not ideal, is it? It's not something that needs an actual decision or a vote right now, is it? It's, it's not something we have to decide on, so if we, if we can find a happy medium somewhere.
So the date is to be advised then, is it?
Yeah. As long as we, Wendy gives adequate focus to the meeting. Can be done, actually, good, check everyone's availabilities or something.
Yeah, because the company website doesn't show anything between the four and twenty-five.
Not yet, no, we'll be doing it, because we haven't put any dates, that's when we agree all our dates, but that later.
Okay, well, that ends the public cloud meeting.
I'm going, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye-bye. I thought it'd rain then for a minute. But it's not. So that's what a town council. Is like. Kind of what I expected. It is kind of what I expected. Up the door. Okay. On that note, let's go for a nice little wander. Through town. Get my legs moving again. Get the blood flowing. They were actually quite nice chairs to sit on, they weren't, excuse me, they weren't as, um. As hard as I thought they were gonna be. So. See what time or what date they choose next month. And I might pop down next month and. See what they've got up to. God, I can smell chicken. I smell chicken. The church and the clock. So midnight to four P M, except. Didn't know that. I didn't know that. Nice hat. Kabab. Just keep walking Claire, just keep walking. Ready to walk past the chicken shop, I'm gonna walk past the kebab shop. There's the old hop in. Let's have a look over here. Nice one, I bet. Unfortunately. Are you? Let's have a wander back down here. There we go. All righty. Seven eleven is open. Now I'll walk past the chubby panda. Oh my god, the smells are absolutely lovely. Charcoal Grill, they do great pizzas actually. Really good pizzas. Last time college doors shut. Just have a wander down here. Just cross the road. Right. I think. I am gonna go home. And crack up on a beer and have a nice beer. Definitely was this. Oh, I'm stranded. Patchwork. 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 Do you know, reflecting on that meeting, how they are like. You know, five K for moving. Um, two K was for insurance and they didn't actually say how much to pay for the other HR company. Um, not that I can recall. Um. And the old bloomers, North Walsham bloomers. I, I, I did notice that, you know, they've only had like a five hundred pound improvement. Um. And if they had a thousand pound at the beginning of the year. I, how can you begrudge that? These people are. Taking their time. Out of their day. And going around. Weeding. And tidying up all the beds and there are a lot of beds in North Walsham and a boat. Um, and they do a great job making North Walsham. Bloom. They really do. You okay?
Yeah, I just had myself skating.
Okay. Okay. Bless him. He's not bleeding, he's just limping, he's all right. Uh. So, yeah. I don't begrudge that at all. I think that's something, that's my current spit about it all, I don't know what happened to, uh, the Children's Day guy. Because he was there to, I thought, talk, but he left, maybe he didn't like the camera. Hey mate, you all right? You okay? Your, your phone's on the floor. There you go, look, put it in your pocket, mate, put it in your pocket. It's all right, just put it in your pocket, you'll lose it. Oh, so he did drop it after all. Um. Mental health. It's very important, isn't it? Honestly. Let's go, let's go in this direction. Because I came in this direction. So we'll finish in this, this pool wall, I've seen this be knocked a couple of times. It's quite a bad road to actually come in and out of. But if you do it carefully. You don't have to hit a wall. Wonder what the car looked like? Oh, look. How pretty. The other thing that has just popped into my mind, was that Hornbeam Verge, I wonder what Hornbeam Verge is? Because if it's, if I worried about the upkeep, I'm wondering. You know, can they kind of turn it into a garden, lower the prices? Who knows? But then I don't know. What hornbeam they're talking about. This is hilarious. Now that was either one very pissed off neighbour. Or the council. Um. Contractor. What do you reckon? Who knows? Poor cars. Oh, it's so funny, I shouldn't laugh, but it is funny. Obviously not for the car owners. Let's have a little wander down here. Finish my nice little evening. With a little walk. Down here. The old train line, this is. And I've suddenly gone blank. They'll come to me in a minute. Hi birds. Can't see you. What do you reckon, a robin? Oh, hello. Lovely. Gorgeous, I think it's just gone over. Do you know how wonderful it is to walk down here, well, apart from that, to walk down here and not see any rubbish? I've got a donkey coming up. Oh, there is this blackbird, it's a blackbird right there, look. Yeah, just don't poop on me. Hiya, hey donkey. It's great, isn't it? I've not even seen a bag of crisps. Or a bottle of drink. Fantastic. Absolutely fantastic. That sounds amazing. I love the sound of birds. I love the sound of birds. When I was in Australia, I'd hear the cockerboars. Don't get cockerboars here. Amazing. So clean. I've not even seen any dog poop. Actually, didn't, uh. Didn't one of the councillors say about the dog poop? Oh. I would say. Little child has lost their sock. I love seeing things like that picked up and placed somewhere in case somebody comes back to look for it. I don't mind that sort. Makes me smile. Wow. Really impressed. I never walked down here, never. I think I have probably two or three times over the years. But, uh. And then this route carries on going across the road. Let's just cross the road if we can. Although I can't actually see down the road. Yeah, we're good. Well, guys, I'm going to leave you here with that sunset. And with the. Continuation of Weaver's Way. She has down there. And, uh. That sunset. Right. Well, that's my first town council, done and dusted and ticked. So, uh. Yeah, interesting. Let's see if they sort the, uh, the doctor's bin out and see if they do something about the school. So apart from that, I'll say cheerio for now. Oh, pushed the wrong button. Oh dear. Anyway, cheerio for now.